Short agenda, but there's plenty of stuff on it for us to consider. Has everyone read the minutes of the June 2nd and June 17th meetings? Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. The first item on the agenda tonight is the final plan for the addition of parking spaces to the Septa train station in Villanova. Is the applicant here? Yeah.
We are. Dave Falcone, Saul Ewing, on behalf of Septa for the Villanova train station expansion. We've been, before you all, a bunch through the preliminary process, and we're back now in the final stages. We received review letters from Gannett Fleming as well as Gilmore, and I'm happy to report we're pretty much will comply across the board with those letters. I'll give a little background on the project. You all are familiar with the Villanova train station. We are expanding that station to increase the parking. This is a two-phase project. We're also adjusting the platforms and performing improvements to the platforms to make them more ADA accessible and compliant. We are, as you can see on the plans that are up top there, on the entrance, we are making that portion one-way, allowing for two-way traffic beyond it, and then looping traffic back around. We are not proposing any real improvements to the topside parking lot, but we are, based on the recommendations of the Planning Commission, which was ultimately approved, by the board, installing planting aisles up there that are not there today. And those aisles are compliant, with the exception of where you see the handicap stalls. We requested and received a waiver in preliminary to not have an aisle there, a planting strip, excuse me, as a result of the handicap and ADA spaces. So, again, we received the letter from Roger Phillips, from Gannett Fleming, and all of the recommendations from Roger are will comply. I'll note one change in the letter, which would be Roman numeral I, subsection 2, talks about 20 feet in width. We did request a waiver, and we did receive zoning approval to have 20-foot aisles, and that's consistent, you'll note, with the previous page in 225-29A1, that we were required by the zoning hearing board permitting aisles of not less than 20 feet in width, and parking stalls of not less than nine feet in width and 18 feet. So that is consistent. So it's a will comply only to the extent that we have relief from the zoning board in our preliminary approval, also is consistent with a 20-foot aisle, as opposed to 25 or 22, sorry. Otherwise, we will comply there. With Amy's letter from Gilmore, we are will comply across the board there as well. A couple of caveats there. In subsection 2B, I believe that our engineer, Julie Rentsch, who's here this evening as well, from Urban, has spoken with Amy, and we do show the 25-foot entrance, so I think that comment would come off. And then on the back page two of her letter, subsection G, "We are amenable to installing the sidewalk, but it may impact our impervious coverage." We are, and our approval from the zoning hearing board was pretty tight based on our plan, so to the extent we add additional impervious, we'd be willing to do it to the extent we don't exceed our permitted impervious coverage, if that's acceptable.
I think that's adequate.
Are we able to point out on the plan, a couple of these spots, that particularly comment G, can you show me where that would be?
So, Julie, can you work this?
So, the area that Amy was speaking of is right over in this area here.
And we'll stripe that, right?
Pardon me?
We'll stripe that.
If we add the sidewalk, yes, we will provide strapping.
The impervious coverage issue is in that planted area there, Susan.
Across that.
Across that.
Right.
So, if we are able to make that work, we'll stripe in that initial location, and then put the sidewalk in across the planted area.
And I'm assuming, Amy, by curb ramps, you meant if there's going to be a sidewalk in that planting area, that there'd be ADA, you know, ramping up?
It would require DWS's detectable warning services as you're entering the active driveway.
But I also mean, just in terms of access up onto the walkway, you wouldn't have to jump the curb, you'd provide the walkway curb.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have other board comment?
I have a couple of quick questions.
Keep going.
The first one, actually, is directed toward Amy. The email I sent you today about the question on page one of your comments, subsection two, comment B, I didn't quite understand your comment.
Oh, my response to you?
Yes.
He could just explain that, that that actually applies to the access to and from the parking area, not an internal aisle way, and that would be considered an aisle way back there.
Which one's that?
The far right, looking at the plan, upper far right, that two-way aisle that curves...
Right. So, on our plans, that was not mentioned, and I can see there's a number, I don't think it was mentioned, but I can see a number up on the plan that's on the board.
I think I scaled it off.
Where, Amy, or is this the 21-foot? Yeah, it is.
On our plans, that wasn't, okay, so that's 21. And Amy, you're saying that that has, that's the 21 because it's an internal driveway?
Correct.
Okay, now where, and the front, if we can look at the, as you go west, is that the same thing on that end of the island? Same thing, it's part of the internal roadway?
These are 25 or more. I don't have them dimensioned. I can provide dimensions on the next submission.
Okay. All right. That was one. I was trying to understand that comment. That was one thing. The other thing was the bicycle rack, comment A, under general comments. I'm assuming the same thing with regard to Delaware County Planning Commission, that they wanted the bicycle rack area with pavement. Is that included in this now? Or is it, again, another issue with the impervious?
That's the impervious. So, I don't think, we're going to be very close just doing the sidewalk. We find that to be a more desirable improvement. We think the bike racks are appropriate on grass and that type of an area. So that's what it is now. So we're focusing on the sidewalk, the ADA sidewalk, to get to interconnect traffic, pedestrian traffic. We would not be able to do both. We know that already. The numbers are going to be very tight, just to begin with. Julie ran some initial calculations, and it's very tight just with the sidewalk.
I noticed in the letter from Urban Engineers that you're going to be phasing the project. Actually, most of the, a good bit of the improvements are part of Phase Two. When is that supposed to happen?
What's the timing on Phase Two?
This is more a question for you, John. Is it going to be in the five-year vesting for the plan? Is this, we're going to approve the things that they're planning to do in a second phase, but they really only have the five years, right, for vesting?
Five years protects them from any change of ordinances. They can do this, the approvals are good forever.
Okay, but if something changes, it's only good for the five years.
Right, so, like John said, so if the ordinance changes, we'd have to come back.
So if zoning changes or SADO changes, and they come in six years from now with something, then they wouldn't be vested. You get protection for five years.
Yep, but approval is good for...
It's good, yeah, right.
I just had two more, I think they're pretty quick questions. The note on the zoning hearing board decision, the deadline was April, I guess, I'm assuming that's okay. Did you get your building permits already?
I don't think we have pulled building permits yet.
The zoning hearing board letter says that it had to be done within six months of the date of the letter, which would have been back in April.
But, so the Act, John, what is it, Act, that's told right now, and any approvals from townships are told until...
On page C11, what is the mean limit of paving? I'm just curious about that.
On the eastern end of the plan...
I have to, hold on one second.
On our plans, I don't know, is it, I don't...
Yeah, on C11, on our plans, right in the middle of the page, it says limit of paving on the parking lot.
Going the wrong way. Hold on, sorry, I'm going the wrong way through these plans.
Oh, this is not the right pages?
No, C11, here we go. Where are you referring to?
There's some writing, go just to the left of that, left, right there.
Right there. So, the idea is that we are going to be replacing the paving just in the parking space area. They're going to saw cut and mill out the paving, and pave back the, just the parking space area, leaving as much of the existing asphalt that's out there currently, rather than paving the entire parking lot.
Oh, so that's more of a, just a design thing for you guys, it didn't affect the plan?
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay. That's more of a construction thing.
And they didn't, this thing didn't go back to Delaware County, right? We just had the one set of comments?
That's right.
Okay. Those were all my questions.
I had one question from an earlier review of this.
Yes.
I think I brought it up. Is there any possibility that Villanova, or Septa, I should say, can put in one or two car charging stations?
We did consider that.
It's possible, yes.
It's not required, I understand, but this would be the moment in time to be proactive since you're going to be doing work there.
Bill's with Septa, so he's mulling it over.
I'm just trying to consider where it might be most effective to do that.
Well, just giving us perhaps a verbal commitment that you'd strongly consider, or will, in fact, put one or two in would be a great thing. I mean, it's the whole idea, the car's going to be there for eight hours in many cases, or longer.
I believe this is the first time we've actually had a request like this. And I don't, two people at home.
I'm Bill Kayden, project manager from Septa. This is the first time in my history that we've had, you know, a request like this, and I realize it's new technology.
Not as new as you might think. I mean, there's four spaces over at the King of Prussia Mall, and I know the manager because I'm on another board, and they're adding another four.
They're being used.
Yeah, they're being used. And, I mean, it's the perfect spot. I mean, the mall is an odd thing, because how many people are shopping there, two, three, four, eight hours? Well, a few, I guess, but commuters, commuters are like the penultimate user, and, you know, the trains are electric, why not take care of it with a couple of cars?
The thing is, the area closest to the tracks is our permit parking, okay? And that, I'm not sure that that would be an appropriate spot for that type of, that type of hardware to be installed. The parking, you know, from the, on the parking garage side, that would probably be more specific to it, but, again, that restricts, now that restricts that parking to electrified vehicles.
I think that you could make them electric permit parking. It's an idea.
I will take that back to my parking people, and give it some consideration.
Of all the people that come before us in a typical, you know, year, a train parking lot seems like one of the best spots for electric parking.
Can't say as I disagree, I'm just, you know, it's a new one on me, okay? And I'll take it back to my parking people, and we'll give it some consideration.
Okay. Do we have other questions, comments from the board? Do we have...
You know what?
Go ahead.
Just one more quick thing. 29A1 in the letter from Gannett Fleming references that it's the parking width of the parking aisles, but on the plan, it's mentioning that 29A1 is regarding the size of stalls.
So if you look back, Susan, to the previous page of the letter?
Yep.
You see the relief...
So that's under the... Yep.
Yep. It talks about 225-29A1 with stalls and access aisle.
Well, I see the stalls, I see 284B regarding the zoning board relief, but they're not going, zoning board's not going to give you SADO relief.
No, so I'm talking about the second paragraph, or the first main paragraph underneath, the heading is 255-29A1.
Right, got that.
And these are, this is Roger's letter during preliminary.
Correct.
And it talks about applicants requesting conditional waiver of section 225A1.
In accordance with the approval. Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
All right, so that's how they referenced it. So that's why you don't need the specific waiver about the aisles on the plan?
Right, that's correct. That follows the zoning relief.
Okay, thank you. That clarified that. Amy, were all of your comments addressed, all of your traffic, internal traffic comments?
Yes, they were.
Okay, thank you.
Roger, that goes the same for you, is correct. Your comments were all addressed, you're satisfied.
David's meeting all this.
Right.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah.
I'm ready for a motion.
I move that we approve this, as stipulated with, provided that the applicant will comply with all the items they said they would comply with, with the exception of those items which have been accepted by zoning hearing board.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Did you get that, John? Did you get that?
Just in terms of procedure, we sort of have two Cabrini items here, and it would seem that it's largely the exact same thing, but can you clarify this for us, Roger, what we're actually going to be doing here?
Sure. The first item is a revision of an existing preliminary approval that Cabrini has, and the second item would be the final approval of the section of the plan that was revised that preliminary. So it's one project, two parallel motions, if you will, one for the revision of the existing preliminary approval that was granted in 2012, I believe.
So that's the approval where we, many would say was basically about the parking garage, but also had the Dixon addition in it, and a couple other things, and some buildings were being torn down, and traffic changed. So that's that overall preliminary plan.
Yes, yes.
And the revision is just the relocation of the Dixon addition from one side of Dixon to the other.
That's correct, yeah.
And a tweak on the parking, okay?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have another question, Rogers. So if we start with a preliminary plan, and whatever our recommendation is, then is there any difference between that and the final plan?
I would say no.
Okay. So if we, whatever we grant, let's say we, to assume we grant it, I don't know if we will, but if we did grant approval of the revision to the preliminary plan, then we would just follow up with the next and say, boom, it's done, final.
The final plan that's in front of you reflects the changes that are being requested on the preliminary plan, so yes, it's basically...
So there's nothing else added?
The final plan, the final plan goes into more detail with the design elements than what the preliminary plan does, but it's the same thing, basically, that they're doing.
Okay. But is it that the preliminary plan is not, has the ability to be changed again? We're only approving a change, and then now we're going to freeze it, and then we'll say, up on shelf, A is the preliminary plan? But now, then the final plan is just this one little piece?
For this, for this section, that's correct. And then if they would come in at a later date to build more of what is shown on the preliminary plan, that section would then have to go through final approval.
Okay, okay.
Okay, but here's the thing that's a little bit confusing, is that the sheet three that we received, that's separate, it says revise, might not even say revised.
Overall site revision.
Yeah, overall site improvements. It does say revision, it doesn't have a date on it.
What about this? Is that a three?
Mine, mine doesn't have the date, but in any event, the point of the story I'm trying to make here is that, on the final plan, that the north, the parking garages are not proposed, and on this revision one, they are. So is this the revised preliminary, or is this the final?
That's the revised preliminary, and if you refer to my letter of June 30th, I made a comment that they changed that title block to clear that up.
Thank you, I did see that, I was trying to put this all together. I don't understand why the revised isn't in the final plan, because the final doesn't have the parking garages.
Well, because the final plan is strictly for the expansion of the Dixon Center, and then the other items that are proposed for final at this time, the parking garages are not.
So we are not giving final approval tonight for the parking structures, either one?
That's correct. That was in the preliminary approval from 2012, and that remains a preliminary approval. The only modification to the preliminary plan are the areas shown around the Dixon Center. And then, you'll be then considering the final approval of, again, just the areas around the Dixon Center, and not the overall plan.
Okay.
You know, we talked about the five-year aspect of Villanova's approval. Does that apply? I mean, what's the difference between approving a preliminary plan and a final plan for purposes of ordinance changes?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. John, I'll start over.
Steve and I were having a sidebar here on this.
Okay. We just talked about the Septa lot and the spaces, and now their approval is quote, "good for five years," and they're insulated from changes to our ordinances and things like that. And they, actually, the approvals are good forever, but after five years, new ordinances can impact their construction. Is there any legal difference between the preliminary approval and the final approval for the purposes of this five-year rule?
No.
So, does that mean that the clock is running on the preliminary from 2012?
Five years, yes.
Okay.
Well, let me, let me just, because I started looking at this a little bit more over the weekend, and today, and I think, and I talked to Joanne Sinister today about this, because I was a little confused as to why there were two things also. See, the way I, the way I look at this is, this is a revised preliminary plan. Phase one of that ought to be the Dixon Center. So there ought to be a line that says, this is phase one, everything else is phase two. I don't know whether the plans actually show that that way, but that's a, so that you have to act on tonight. They're also asking you to jump ahead and give them final plan approval for what I would call phase one. You know, whether you want to do that tonight or not is really up to you. I think they filed it as a final plan, and sometimes the township has let people file preliminary slash final, and you don't go through the two stages. But I think to make it clear, because you have an existing 2012 resolution, which has some conditions in it, which should not go away. So they're asking you to revise that, and they're carving out the Dixon Center, and it looks a little different from the plan it was approved in 2012. So that ought to be phase one, and they can proceed to final on that. And then they would do agreements and post financial security just for that. And then the rest of it, if they wanted to revise the rest of that in the future, they could come in and ask to revise that again. So plans, I mean, plans get phased, you know, all kinds of ways, and that seems to me to be more logical than having two approvals here.
I think this question always comes up, and it's, I guess it's a nuance, but, you know, at what point is a plan, not just a revision, it's a new plan? I mean, this building has moved, but the addition moved to the whole other side and caused them to need zoning relief. I mean, that didn't exist in the first preliminary approval. They started needing a zoning relief. I actually was reviewing our notes from the 2012 approval today. John Sartor was the engineer at the time, and initially, they were going to need zoning relief for the length of the building. Remember, this came up last night, last month, and I said, I don't remember them going to the zoning hearing board, and they ended up changing the building and didn't need zoning relief for the building, and now they did. But they've also changed the configuration of the parking lot, which was going to be one of my bigger comments tonight, it's just really funky the way they're doing the parking lot north of the new proposed center. But the third thing that, just, John, maybe you can weigh in about this, the third piece about this that just doesn't quite settle right with me is that somehow they're getting to build, and they're going to, and they have intention to build more, and they are going to continue to not address their existing nonconformity with parking, and they're going to maintain it, and that just doesn't, and we're ripping up parking spots, and we're putting in more, and we're phasing them, and it just, it's, the math of the parking is convoluted, is going to be the word I was going to use. And I recognize with regard to the Dixon Center, we did discuss this last month, it had to do with some of the uses, but there are uses in that building that you mentioned last month or two months ago that should require additional parking. There's some office use, you didn't break it out for us, and, but in general, the whole plan, because of the phasing, is allowing for them to be ripping up parking and putting in more, but somehow, we're still not going to be improving their existing nonconformity, and it's a pretty significant existing nonconformity. So, John, I don't know if you ever thought about all of that as well?
May I please send, Joanne Seimeister for Cabrini, counsel for Cabrini?
We'd like to hear from John first, but stay up, stay up at the podium.
Okay. Susan, your issue again has to do with the nonconformities in parking.
Well, it's just, the phasing of it is kind of allowing us to miss sight of the fact that they have a 50% nonconformity, and they're, they're planning on ripping up parking spaces at a later date, and they're going to put in parking spaces at a later date, and they added an extra parking lot in the revised preliminary plan. It's a pretty funky shape, north of the Dixon building, and it's, you know, a lot more spaces. They're doing it in phase two, I recognize, but, you know, we haven't taken any time to even review any of these parking numbers, and we're getting set to review, to revise, to, you know, potentially approve a final plan, and none of us have talked anything about the parking numbers. Some of the uses that were referenced last month, John, in the addition, most of it wouldn't have caused there to be a need for more parking, but there was some use of it that was supposed to cause more parking.
Yeah. I mean, my understanding, just, again, looking at the plans, that what they have in front of you is not creating any more nonconforming parking, it's not...
They're adding office.
What's that?
I understand they're adding, some of that proposed addition is some office area, athletic offices.
It's very small accessory use to...
An accessory use, yeah.
So... Okay. Right.
I just, we haven't discussed the parking at all.
I guess it's an issue as to how you're calculating the parking spaces, what are you basing it upon, and how many spaces are we talking about, Susan, that you think that ought to be on here that are not on here?
I have no idea. They didn't break down the office, they didn't break down the office square footage last month. We kind of just discussed the fact that there was going to be some office in there, and we did not really ever discuss the parking, both the existing, let me put it this way, it's confusing to me, I guess you and I agree on this, the same thing. It's confusing that they put in all this information about parking for phase two that they're not seeking approval for tonight. To me, that has convoluted the situation.
But the, I mean, the overall plan, though, meets what our requirements are at this point, even though they're not going to build it all. At least, that's what I'm, my two colleagues to the right of me are telling me. So, if we're looking to deal with issues down the road, because I have a concern about, and you mentioned one other thing, when does this become a new plan? When somebody walks in the door and they file this as a revised plan, you know, at that point, someone's got to make a call whether it's a revised plan or a totally new plan. And there is some standards, or some case law that deals with that. They filed this as a revised plan, the township accepted it as a revised plan, we can't now say it's a new plan and we're going to start all over.
No, so that determination was made, then?
Yeah, that gets done, and municipalities do it differently, but who's ever taken the check and the application and that initial review has to make that call.
Okay.
And, you know, if it's a totally new plan, it gets sent back to the applicant. That did not happen here. I don't recall it coming up as an issue at the time.
With regards to the parking, the overall plan complies because of an existing nonconformity. It doesn't comply with our current code. So by giving the variance, the zoning variance, and not requiring, allowing the building to get larger, rather than building another building... building, they've then reduced their parking requirements. Because if they were to put the office and additional space in an additional building, then that would have counted for new parking. Am I correct? They would have required, that would have required them to provide parking for that new building if it weren't attached addition.
Yes. The parking was calculated based on the dominant use of the building, which is the arena. And if you would feel comfortable, I'm sure Mr. Lambert would be happy to come up and explain how that parking was all determined.
Right.
But that was, again, approved in 2012. And then when the building was modified here, we had gone over the parking requirements. And the dominant use of the building is the arena, and the parking was calculated by the number of seats. And Mr. Lambert can take you through that.
But there's still, when everything's all said and done, phase one and two, there's still an existing nonconformity in the parking.
That's correct.
Okay.
I think the other issue to take into account is that, just not to pick on anyone, but when Eastern comes in for a change or a need, they, the last time they were in, they added more parking than required because apparently their use is different of their square footage, so to speak. So, you know, they added like another 10 or 15 spaces on the last plan. Whereas, and the neighbors were always out at a meeting to comment on the fact that Eastern students were parking in their neighborhoods, et cetera. And for one reason or another, we don't hear that about Cabrini. That doesn't mean that we will never hear that, but so far, we don't.
We have excess parking on campus, and we have some slides to show you at various times of the day how vacant the parking lots are. They're underutilized, to be candid. We have a lot of students that live there. And it's just a huge campus, and there's plenty of parking. In any event, since we were here the last time in May and tonight, we have met with the staff and, as well as with Peter Nelson, who's not here tonight. And we also had a hearing before the zoning hearing board with regard to the dimensional variance on the Athletic Center. And we were granted the variance as requested so that we could build it in accordance with the revised plan. And we're seeking final approval of that portion of the plan. And as Mr. Rice said, you want to consider that phase one, that would be phase one, because that's where we're going to commence construction.
We're only approving the phase one of this plan.
We're only, we're asking for final approval for the phase one, which is the Dixon Athletic Center.
They're asking...
That's where we want to move forward with that.
They are asking for preliminary...
On the amendment to the whole plan.
Amendment.
And the amendment to the whole plan really just reflects the change to the Dixon Athletic Center. Why, which is why it's somewhat confusing.
I'll be interested to see...
The plans?
The, well, I'll be interested to see your slides. And so probably, I am going to ask about the parking some more. But you have less than half the parking, the 1,876 spaces calculated. And I, you know, if you're not using the 932 you've got, I can certainly understand why. We're not forcing you to add more, but...
You can drive through that campus. I mean, I drive through all the time. And you can cut through the parking lot that's marked 281 parking spaces. You can drive through there as if, because there's no cars parked there. So you don't actually have to follow the road.
I'm interested.
Because there's never cars parked in that lot. The camp drop-offs, going to the swimming pool, there's never cars.
No, it's vacant generally. All right. At this point, I will ask Mr. Lambert to run us through the plan.
Good evening. Rob Lambert. I think I'll be able to answer some of the questions here. Let me see here. So this slide in front of you, and I guess I should rewind a little bit. So back in January, January 29th, actually, Howard Holden and I came in and met with Kevin Kachansky and Roger Phillips to review how the project had evolved, you know, from 2012 to current, how it evolved, what we proposed to move forward with now. We talked about the specifics about the Dixon addition. We talked with the specifics about how we were going to proceed. At that time, Kevin asked us to submit a revised preliminary plan and then a final plan. And he said they can move through concurrently so everybody understands what's happening. But we should really submit them both together. We also reviewed all the parking requirements extensively. There's probably 80 pages or something of every building, every layout, every square footage, you know, a whole big table of how we counted that. We reviewed that. It's a zoning code. So we reviewed that with the zoning officer, received his determination that we did it in accordance with the ordinance, and we proceed based on that determination from the zoning officer. So that's how we are here today. We filed back then in the end of April or beginning of May. At the time, at the end of May, Roger asked, instead of coming forward in the June meeting schedule, if we could postpone coming and meet with staff again to review the application. There was a little bit of confusion about what was proposed now, what was proposed later. On those plans, we actually showed the overall preliminary plan as part of our final package. And we're just identifying that we were doing parts of it. That was a little bit confusing about what was actually proceeding today as final plan. We then revised those plans, resubmitted those. And that's what we have in front of you tonight, are those revised plans that really clarify. And these next few slides will show you exactly how the plans have evolved. But that clarified what was being proposed as final, of what was going to be built today. So this is the plan that was approved in 2012. It was the overall, the overall campus plan. You had the south garage. You had a link road, some revisions to the internal parking. You had a student center building, a second parking garage. I'm going to point out the Dixon addition to the west of the building, and then a parking lot, again, to the north of Dixon. So all that was proposed on the previously approved plans. The plan in front of you now, this is the one sheet, Susan, that you referenced earlier, was this sheet three of 21. Just out of coincidence, our final package also has 21 sheets. It wasn't intended that way, and both are labeled sheet three.
Yeah.
And so both of them are three of 21. The latest revision date on this, I think, was 625. And so this goes through. And this is the same plan as the previous plan. So if I can hit this correctly. So if you look, all the improvements, except for the Dixon area, are the same. So this link road is the same. The south parking structure is the same. Everything on the internal campus is the same. The campus center and parking structure are all the same. This little parking lot right here is the same. The only thing that really changed is we moved the addition from the west side of the building. It grew. It expanded really when they started to fine tune the needs of the building. The addition changed. And then the parking lot to the north of the building, it changed to accommodate, you know, various items. One was the kind of interim parking lot. This road is still the same. One area that we did add a little bit to the scope, and that was a result of some of our stormwater testing and the results of that, where we're adding curb to the entry driveway. So we now include that in our scope. But really, all that we're doing is adding a cobble curb down the entry driveway to help control stormwater. So this next slide shows in green what is proposed as phase one. So this is what is proposed right now as phase one, to build the Dixon addition, a little sidewalk that crosses the parking lot just to improve the pedestrian access. And we're replacing, when we improve that pedestrian access, we'll get to those slides later, we're improving that pedestrian access. And as a result of that, we have to relocate 16 parking spaces. So we relocated those to the north side of the building as kind of that first step of the next phase of the project. But also, it's in an area that's going to be disturbed with the construction of this building. We want to limit our footprint. We don't want to take down trees unnecessarily. We're not trying to, you know, expand our footprints. So really, we're trying to keep that improvement as tight as possible to the building. And now on the dash line, this is the area that I referred to, where we're going to be adding a curb to the entry driveway. And it's a little bit wider than that because some of our landscaping goes up that alley of trees along that entrance. And there's some landscaping up on the north side there as we add the trees.
Now, did, are you expanding it? I think it says 20 to 22. And there was something about 26, 28, excuse me, 28 feet? Is that...
Oh, no. It's going to be a 22-foot wide driveway. There was a question in Amy's letter. It was referencing a street. It's not a street. It's a driveway. So we're proposing a 22-foot wide driveway.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll jump to the letters just so we can...
And Rob, quickly, what's the driveway now existing?
I think 20 and a half. So we're about a foot and a half wider than it is existing. Amy, I think part of the, Amy's letter is a little bit longer. Part of that was the confusion of the original plan. She actually didn't get a copy of the resubmitted plans. And so she was, there was just some confusion about what was being proposed. So I would, and I think Amy would agree with me, the bulk of those comments refer to the preliminary plan items that really were part of the original approval, things that we weren't changing. We didn't touch any of those improvements as part of this amendment. And Roger's letter had a couple of comments, but I think, you know, we'll comply with all those. So really, this is what we're asking for, for the amendment to the preliminary plan, going back to this slide. So this is the amendment to the preliminary plan. It's the same preliminary plan that you approved before, with the exception of the Dixon improvements. This plan is identified in each one. It says phase one or phase two. But in summary, really, it's the Dixon addition, the small, I think there's 16 parking spaces to the north of Dixon, the walkway across, and the curbing. That is going to go into the final plan, and that's labeled here as phase one. The rest of the improvements right now are labeled phase two on these plans.
This addition is larger than the original preliminary addition to Dixon. How much, can you compare the two for us real quick?
I do not have an exact square footage. I don't know. Richard, do you have that?
Hi, everyone. Richard King from WRT. The original footprint of the addition was about 11,000 square feet, and the new footprint is about 18. It's about a 30,000-square-foot addition overall. But the footprint is about 3,000 or 4,000 square feet bigger. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head. So it's not a huge amount bigger in terms of footprint. It's bigger in ter, it's also...
You mean it's small, two stories or something?
It's two stories. So you're, the additional floor area is twice, is double.
But we just saw those slides. It looks much bigger.
It's, well, it's certainly, it's certainly longer and has more presence because it's not tucked back by the athletic field. The original addition was fairly long. And it was, I guess it had, it didn't have much of a presence because it was tucked on the other side. But so...
I mean, we just saw it five minutes ago.
Correct.
Could we see that slide again real quick?
Sure.
That looks very different. I mean, is there something I'm missing here? I mean, it's brown and brown, right?
It is. It's a much smaller addition. Actually, I think the number is probably 5,000 square feet for this. It was on two floors. So it may have been 11,000 square feet versus the 30,000 square feet. But what happened was, this program, you know, is really taking a look at the program, trying to fit it into those spaces. The plan evolved. Plan evolves, you know, plans evolve all the time. You know, at the time of this plan, I think we started this plan in 2010. The needs were a little bit different for the building. The needs evolved and...
And I'm aware that as a board, we reviewed this before it went to zoning, and we knew that it was on the other side. And we recommended to zoning that they grant you the waiver. But I just think, you know, if we're now in the stage where we can look at it further, we should acknowledge that it's a lot bigger.
Yeah, it is.
As a starter.
A question for you. The, are you creating any additional parking, or are you just relocating 16 spaces?
We're relocating 16 spaces.
Okay. So, but the 30,000-square-foot Dixon Center, how much additional parking is that going to call for?
Again, we've gone through this with the zoning officer. We've gone through it with John Rice's office, Peter Nelson. It won't require any additional parking. And the reason is, is it's considered, I believe the term in the code was community recreation center. And community recreation center is based on the largest place of assembly. In addition to that, Kevin asked us to be ultra-conservative. Could we also count the pool area? And not just the pool area, but assuming that we could set up a chair on top of the water surface is how we would, you know, calculate it. But that's, we agreed to that. We've, you know, shown that calculation. We have an agreement of your zoning officer and a determination that that is a valid interpretation of the code and that no additional parking spaces, because we're not increasing, you know, the gym space, you know, the largest place of assembly in the building. Most of the improvements to this are lockers. The vast majority of the change to the building is locker space. There is a fitness center use that's going to be on the second story, and I can get to some slides that'll go through what's actually in the building. But really, a building like this, if we're not changing that largest place of assembly from a, you know, step away from the code for a second, the practical use of the building is we're not really driving any more users to that building.
Thanks. We don't want to interrupt your presentation if you want to keep going with this.
Yeah, I'll flip. So this was kind of the end of the amendment to the preliminary. And so then I wanted to go into the final plan. So this is the final plan that you have in front of you that's part of the larger plan set. It's also labeled sheet three of 21. It has fewer revision dates on it. And this shows you what is proposed as part of this final plan. So this is the phase one that was previously referred to. You have the Dixon Center addition, the improvements across the parking lot, the addition, or the relocation of the parking spaces to the north side of the building, and the curb along the entry driveway. The next slide is just a simple blow-up of that, showing you that area.
How is the widening, the incremental widening of the driveway help with stormwater? You said that in passing.
Yeah. What happened was, is we went out and we originally looked at the area to the north of Dixon. You know, underneath the parking lot is usually a great area to be able to put underground stormwater. High clay content, high groundwater table, really wasn't going to work there. We looked at areas. This is a large surface basin down to the south. Areas in between the two are really in phase two. So, you know, looking at where our improvements are, we have a watershed that basically comes across this athletic field all the way up to a high point, just about where the guard shack is, coming in off of Upper Gulf. And it kind of all sweeps down here. And it all winds up down in this area here. So we had to find an area in this watershed that we'd be able to control or basically provide compensatory stormwater. The school has a little bit of runoff issue along the road where, you know, water just concentrates, and it's been eroding and eroding. So we thought we would look at solving two problems with one solution, is adding a curb to that, we're able to concentrate the water. We're actually also adding a series of inlets all the way up that driveway. And we were able to do some testing, just right under where this note is here, for stormwater, that we were able to be able to provide stormwater management, infiltration, everything that we needed to do per code in that area, compensating in the same drainage area. So when it leaves the site, it's still getting, you know, we're picking up area. We're not directly picking up this roof area, but we're picking up other areas to do that.
So because this is a revision of the preliminary plan, is this not subject to some of the new changes of our stormwater management ordinance, John? It's not?
No. I mean, it's got preliminary plan approval, so...
Right.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Aren't any changes either, by the way. I mean, there hasn't been any. The board did not proceed with making changes.
Yeah. Do we have other comment from the board? Questions?
Yeah, I do. I have one. The comment about the dead-end parking area, it's, it was hard to see it on the revision. That is the piece that is the 16 relocated, right, right there. And so because you're not doing the expansion of it, that's dimensioned on the revised preliminary, that's the reason that it's tight at that end.
Right. Once you do the final, it'll go through. We also provided a turning template to Roger's office, which shows that that's...
I have it. I don't, I mean, it seems like an easy enough thing. You could have bumped out and given it a little bit of wiggle room back there. I don't know why, particularly because you're eventually going to expand that parking lot anyway. I don't know why you wouldn't just add the two or three more feet that they could use back there for that last stall.
I guess what I'd prefer to see is a car that drove all the way through and found there was no spots and had to turn around. That's what I'd prefer to see on the turning template.
These, these...
Yeah, exactly.
These spaces will most likely be Cabrini College vans. So they're probably going to be designated parking spaces. to be designated parking spaces back in this area.
I mean, all the more reason for that. How long are your vans?
They're smaller than the vehicle template that we used.
Okay. I mean...
Did you try that, though? Did you try if the parking spots are full and you have to back, turn around if you go in there and find no spot?
They'd have to, they'd have to back up to a certain point before they could turn around.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's just my point. You're going to expand that parking lot eventually anyway, why wouldn't you just add the little bit more that you need there to not have the dead-end issue? Same thing as Regina was saying.
That was literally my only question.
My only comment to that is if you do that, somebody might park her.
Unless it's posted vans only.
That's right.
I have a couple more slides that are more detailed that you might be able to... So this was the existing conditions plan, I'll just flip through them quickly, which shows you the building, everything around the building. We have the proposed plan that was included as part of the application materials. This was the entry driveway coming in, you can see where that was, both sides there where we were doing that. These are the plans that we presented to the Shade Tree Commission. We met with the Shade Tree Commission, I'd say it was in June, and followed up with their arborist. They are in agreement with the plan and gave us a recommendation for approval for it. This was the landscape plan showing the proposed landscape.
Rob, I'm sorry, can you go back a page? What building is that with all the, what building is that?
That's the same building, that's the Dixon...
Existing.
It's just, this is the existing building. This is the demolition plan.
Oh, thank you.
It's just one of the, one of the sheets in the set here, so. Then we had the proposed, and then this was the, a rendering of what it would look like, basically from the parking lot, looking down to the new lobby area. That was the, kind of our direct slides. I have other slides if you wanted to look at floor plans and footprints and everything else, but I'm not sure if you're really interested in looking at the floor plans.
Can you flip back to the number of trees that are coming out, the picture that's showing it?
That one?
Yes. So that's the area of the campus that you already, you have a waterway, a watershed going through there now? You said that you have a little bit of issue with water runoff there?
No, the area that they were having some issue with some erosion was right along the entry driveway, so the entry driveway is on this side. So this is the, this is the existing Dixon Center. The athletic field's all the way over here, this is the big parking lot just below that. So the area that I was talking about was right along the driveway itself, right at the edge of the asphalt, where the asphalt ends and the grass begins, there's just some erosion in there, and we can solve, solve two problems at once.
I thought I understood you to say the water kind of swings around, around the athletic field and down to the bottom.
Everything, actually, if we go back, this is a large, let's see here, where is it? Right here is a large, above-ground detention basin. Pretty much if you took a line right here, just be these existing contours and came all the way up, almost up to Upper Gulf Road, all the way back down around, this whole area basically drains to that basin. So when we design stormwater, we look at points of interest, and the point of interest is where everything winds up, where it's leaving the property. Obviously, this is not leaving the property, but it's a concentration point for everything that we're doing upstream here. And when we looked at that, the area right in here, we were able to find an area within that same watershed before the water left, to be able to control the stormwater.
So all the trees that you're replacing, where are they going?
The trees we're replacing are going all around this addition, and then all the way up, basically in the same, it's all in the same watershed, up on both sides of the driveway, up in this area, up in here.
All right.
Are you replacing trees so much or adding trees along the driveway?
We're planting more than we're taking out, definitely, and then along the driveway, they have an existing alley of, I believe it's oak trees, and Howard can correct me with the species, but I know we're going to diversify the species when we put them back because I know they've been hit with some blight.
How does the staff feel about the status of the changes to the plan in terms of your comments?
Well, I would just refer to my letter and the specifics that are outlined in the letter. They would certainly be consideration for conditions on any recommendation that you would give.
And as far as Roger's letter go, we will comply with those. There was some question of the second item, number one, with the rec fee.
And that's the final letter or the preliminary letter?
It was the final letter.
That's the final letter.
It's the June 30th letter.
But they're titled preliminary or final?
Oh, I'm sorry. The Final Land Development Plan Letter.
But you started, you touched on a point that I was going to bring up, but go ahead, the rec or open space.
Right, so the first comment was, you know, profiles, we, you know, we've agreed to provide the profiles, that's no problem. The second was the rec fee. I believe technically, under the pending ordinance doctrine, they wouldn't be required to provide the rec fee. I believe Cabrini has voluntarily said that they will provide the rec fee.
That ordinance is still, quote, pending? I appreciate the offer and the...
I think, I think, the ordinance was adopted after the original preliminary plan approval resolution, so, I mean, that's...
That's quite wild.
That's what he's talking about. But I believe Cabrini is willing to pay the fee anyway.
I think that's, you know, very commendable.
Since it's a different plan, to some extent.
Right. Well, it's because we categorized it that way, too. I mean, it is a bigger addition, we've all agreed on that, too.
Rob, on the plan, where it says the category 2 side rear yard setback is only 17 feet, and the repairing buffer is 25, where, can you just show me on the plan where those two spots are, the existing non-conformity?
Give me one minute, I wasn't focused, I wasn't focused on that one.
Sorry.
I believe one is actually the gatehouse, if I'm...
Oh, it's not this building, it's just buildings on the property.
No, 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 no.
Forget it, then it's fine.
It's the overall camp, it has nothing to do, this building complies.
Okay, great.
That's why I had to search.
So the stormwater management you're providing is strictly for the roadway itself?
We're providing, so we look at the proposed addition, the parking, everything that we're touching as per code of what is required. And I'm going to make up a number. Say the number's 30,000 square feet of impervious. We are capturing 30,000 square feet of impervious, it just happens to be in a different location than these improvements. So we're picking up a commensurate amount of impervious and controlling it. It's all in the same watershed, it's in the same area, so if we look at it on a watershed basis, we comply. If you said, I need you to pick up that specific square foot that you just built, you know, it doesn't, you know, the area that we would put it, we didn't get perk rates, it's a much better system to put it, you know, where we're proposing, where we had the perk rates and everything else that would work.
I guess I'm a little confused. When I look at the plan, it doesn't look like there's that much impervious in the roadway that you're, to match what you're installing, but regardless of that, it's more about the runoff, not the amount of impervious anyhow. It's, you're looking at rates, aren't you?
Correct, yeah, yes, it's more complicated than impervious.
So it really doesn't matter.
A lot of it's based on, a lot of it's driven, you get a lot more runoff from impervious than you do pervious.
So I guess my question is, are you providing any infiltration or water quality?
Yes.
And that's all happening on that small area that you're talking about, that's kind of tucked in between the parking and that...
We're providing a large subsurface system, yes.
And that it's going to be constructed as part of this Phase 1?
Correct, absolutely, yes.
So you have all the geotech done for that, it's all going to work?
Yep, all the geotech was done, we've submitted that as all part of our application.
And we have reviewed that and agree with the outcome.
Were there any conditions? Roger, did you have the letter from December 2012 of any of the conditions or approval conditions?
I do not, but the original conditions that were placed, I have it.
Okay, so, I mean, part of whatever we do tonight is going to, of course, include that you have to...
Comply.
And any previous conditions that were part of the preliminary...
The original preliminary plan.
Original approval will follow the plan.
Okay.
Some of the, some of the conditions in that resolution, 2013-5, had to do with submitting a vicinity plan. There was an issue of steep slopes that had to be confirmed, whether they were manmade or not. There was a Gilmore letter and some conditions in there, and the Gannett-Fleming letter, they're all attached to the, to the resolution. There was still an issue as to road improvements out along the perimeter roads that was left open at that point, they'll carry through. There was a requirement that a post-construction stormwater management plan be submitted and reviewed prior to final plan approval for the overall plan, and there was an issue with the intersection of King of Prussian Eagle Road. All those conditions will continue through.
Right, I can't remember if they did a traffic impact study at the time. Yeah, it wasn't ringing a bell for me, okay.
We did one.
Amy, are you satisfied with Earl's comments?
Yes, I am.
It looks like we have no public comment, right?
Other with, other than that turning around issue in the newly proposed parking area, I mean, I'm not, does anyone else see anything?
Would that, go ahead.
I don't, I mean, I'm pretty much fine with the plan as is. I mean, I think your point's well taken, Regina, it could be a little better. I don't know why you didn't design it better, but it doesn't bother me enough to slow it down.
And if you, if you don't run out of impervious and flow compensation, could you do something there?
You know, I think if...
I mean, if they add a little more impervious to the stub of the parking is what I meant.
If, if, if that is the one thing that, you know, we, I'll speak for Howard for this one, is we will agree that we can, you know, we'll create a hammerhead or something there that is a turnaround area to expand that area.
You're eventually going to...
And we just...
You're eventually going to pave that anyway, right?
Right. So, you know, we can, we can agree to that as just a condition moving forward.
I'm going to move that we, well, you know, John, so do you, how do we proceed?
Well, here's, here's the motion that I think is in front of you. It's approval of the revised overall preliminary plan of two phases, and approval of the Phase 1 final plan.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we recommend approval of the revised preliminary plan, which includes Phase 1 and Phase 2.
And all comments from...
And all, right, and, and final approval of the Phase 1 portion of the plan, conditioned upon meeting all of the comments in the Gannett-Fleming letter and the Gilmore letter, as well as the conditions that were placed at the original preliminary plan approval. And additionally, yes, we're going to request that you make a little, you know, fix that bump out a little bit. That's the, that's my motion.
The hammerhead.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
John, just back for a second.
I was going to say skip.
That's preliminary and final, right, or just the final? I mean...
That was, that was final on Phase 1.
We can combine it, we can combine it in one is what I meant, one vote.
One vote, yeah.
There's two items on the agenda and we had one vote, is that okay?
I made one motion.
Yeah, you covered both, you covered both.
I'm just making, just getting John to say yes. Okay. I asked for public comment.
Make a motion to be adjourned.
Second.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.